So, last week, we celebrated 242 years of this country's birth. And just want to say that we want to honor the, all our soldiers and military, and also EMS, police, fire, everyone that works for this country and keeps us safe every day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. Fire evacuation, out the rear doors, out to the parking lot, or to the left, down the stairs to the rear parking lot. Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Renier? Mrs. DePoe? Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Chairman Crisell?
Here. And for the record, Mr. Renier and Mr. DePoe are away on vacation this week, so thank God them better than, I wish I was with them, but leave it at that. Board guests, Mr. Dreszek?
We do not have any guests this evening, Mr. Chairman.
No guests. Number seven, superintendent's report, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a reminder, since we haven't met since graduation, that graduation went off without a hitch. It was a wonderful evening, and I thank everybody for participating. The kids were the highlight, as they should be, and you're all welcome for the weather. Our summer meeting, our next regularly scheduled Board of Ed meeting will be on Tuesday, August 28th. Special meetings may come up as necessary, but that's the next time you'll meet as a board. The board members are also invited to our Summer Instrumental Music and Theater Arts Camp performances. Performance being held on Thursday, July 26th, in the Enfield High Auditorium at 10:00 a.m. Dr. Goodnight and her students have been working hard this summer, and I'm sure you all enjoy the outstanding performances from our kids. There's a flyer enclosed in your packet, along with the grants report and the personnel report. And the last thing is, I know there was a few board members, the last time we met actually wasn't just on June 12th with the regular Board of Ed meeting, we actually had a special meeting, a special joint meeting with the Board of Ed and the town council. I know that some of you weren't able to attend, so I just wanted to give you an update as, if you haven't heard of what had happened during that meeting. There was two items for discussion that meeting with the town council, both of them were budget-related. And the first was dealing with, which now is actually last fiscal year's budget, and the completion of what we had gone through with the significant reduction with state aid from the state of Connecticut with regards to educational cost-sharing. Those of you who remember, we, Enfield took a pretty good hit this year, last fiscal year, in state aid of about $3 million, and we appreciate that the town council held us harmless. They knew that it would be devastating for the Board of Ed to receive such a cut in the middle of a school year, so they absorbed it for us. We were great, extremely grateful for that. And one of the things that you all did as a board was a commitment to the council that we were, along with then-town manager, Mr. Charkowski, that we had instituted a budget freeze last November, with the hopes of trying to save as much money as we could, and knowing that we wouldn't be in a position to repay back the entire debt that we were underneath from the state, but to at least try to do our share, make a good faith effort to pay the board back, or pay the council back as best we could. Proud to announce, we announced that that evening that we actually saved $100,000 this year, which we are returning to the town council. Walter was kind enough to print a giant check, so it looked like a golf tournament, but we are, Pat has confirmed again that the money is there, and it wasn't extra money that we had, we tightened our belts as best we could. One of the things I just want to say publicly is, throughout the entire budget freeze, at no point in time, the restrictions that I put on for staff was, we're not going to affect children, and we're not going to affect programs during this budget freeze. Unfortunately, the adults are going to have to tighten their belts a little bit, and that's exactly what they did. So I'm very grateful for our staff and everybody that chipped in this year to make sure that we can try to do the responsible thing and help the town out in the way that they helped us out during this year. So that $100,000 is actually being put to good use. What the town has done is, a brief update on what's happening at Barnard, as you're all aware, with the OSHA citation, we're notified today that the work at Henry Barnard should be completed by July 13th. But what the town actually did with those additional funds that came back, was they hired, our buildings and ground staff have done a phenomenal job, as they always do, and I know I've said that before from this podium, but in order to properly clean all the buildings under the same guidelines that OSHA put just on Barnard, it was going to be a monumental task in addition to all their summer duties. So what the town manager, Mr. Bromson, proposed to the council was, if funds were available, to hire an outsourcing company to help assist the buildings and grounds staff in order to clean all of the school buildings this year, so we do it all the same way. Because we were able to return some of those funds, I was notified that the town council actually re-appropriated the money we're returning to help offset the cost of that. So the money we gave back, we know exactly where it's going, and we're extremely grateful for the council for doing that. The other thing that we discussed at that council meeting was, actually this fiscal year, I always like to say the following fiscal year, but we're in it now, as most, all of you know, the board's request this year was a 1.85% increase, which was about $1.2 million. Never in my lifetime seen it, but we got more than we asked for. And one of the challenges you all had was, we have an extra $400,000 that we don't know how to spend, what are our options? And instead of just going out and trying to arbitrarily find something to spend money on, you guys took it upon yourself to try to look, to try to take a more responsible route, and start planning, which is something that we're typically used to work, living paycheck to paycheck, and we have been since the beginning of time. And we're in a unique situation this year where we had more money than we anticipated, and instead of just trying to go out and spend it, and then being challenged from year on, you know, beyond that, in order to maintain that level of funding, is there something that we can do to start planning ahead? Now, by state law, the Board of Education is allowed to carry over 1% of their budget from year to year. We can only do that with the approval of the town council. Now, the town council has to do that during the resolution when they adopt our budget. Now, they didn't do that this year because they actually appropriated more money than we had requested. But one of the topics of discussion that evening was, because we now have essentially an additional $400,000, we have carried money over in the past, but it's never been that significant. I think the most we did was about $100,000 one year. The reason we've never carried over the entire 1% was because it's $700,000, and we simply don't have it. But one of the conversations, the dialogue that we had with council was, if you allow us to create the savings account, because we can't do it without your permission, and oh, by the way, thank you, you've already filled it almost to the top, if you just allow us to carry it, we can start planning a budget in a two-year cycle as opposed to a 12-month cycle like we're currently, currently living in. Unanimously, the council was amenable to that request, and I think a lot of that has to do with the level of trust that's been built up by both of these boards, and I commend all of you for doing that, the level of transparency between the board and the council. We've been having these conversations since the fall. I can only talk about what we've done this year. There really was no surprises, at least on our end, the surprises came for what check actually cleared and what came from the state. But the relationship that you guys have fostered with the council, and the council should be commended for this as well, to have some trust and faith in each other that you're going to do the right thing for, because at the end of the day, we want to benefit every citizen in this town, not just the school board, not just the town council. So we walked away from that meeting with the understanding that we would return the money from this fiscal year, and it would be put to use back into the schools, and though they can't, they didn't formally take a vote on allowing us to carry over the 1% for next fiscal year, they can't do that until they actually do the resolution for next year's budget, but all of the conversation we had, and it was unanimous the day we were there, that that's their intention going forward. So the challenging part now is going to figure out how we make 1% work next year, but that's what Andrew and I have to figure out, so we're going to work on that, but at least now, we have the benefit of time in trying to figure out how it works. So that's what you missed in the event you weren't able to attend, and if you have any questions about that, I can certainly fill you in later. But that will conclude the superintendent's report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Any audiences?
None.
None. So I declare audiences closed. Board members' comments. I will start with Mr. Rutledge to send.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These will be brief. I just wanted to send a message of congratulations out to all the Enfield High School graduates. We were at the graduation ceremony recently. It was absolutely amazing ceremony, the weather held up, it wasn't too hot, sun wasn't in our eyes for too long, that was all a good thing. So congratulations to you all, and a special thanks to those graduates who are joining our armed forces. You know, that's an incredible sacrifice you're making, and I'm sure I speak for all of us when we say, when I say that I appreciate what you're doing. To all our students returning next year, I just wish you a safe, happy, enjoyable, and hopefully somewhat educational summer, so that you're ready for the rigors of the next phase in your academic life come September. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Riley?
I wanted to echo Chris's statements. Congratulations to the graduates, the class of 2018. The ceremony was great, there was such a wonderful enthusiasm from everybody there, it was just awesome. I wanted to thank the 4th of July committee for the wonderful celebration we had in town this weekend. It was awesome. So much to do and see, and the fireworks were always a big hit. I wanted to remind everybody just to watch out for the kids playing outside in the streets. Sometimes they get rambunctious. We don't have sidewalks on our street, and it's a small street, so just keep your eyes aware of those kids out there. If it gets too hot, take a trip to the library, get out of the heat, read a couple of books to help avoid the summer slide. That's always a big thing, that the teachers will love to hear that one. I wanted to send a shout-out to the Enfield PD, their lip sync thing that they had on Facebook was really awesome, so thanks to them. And then, I'm going to have one selfish comment tonight. I want to congratulate my dad on his retirement. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. And Ms. LeBlanc?
Sure. I would also like to say thank you to the graduates. They did a phenomenal job with their speeches. I loved the Val and Sal's speech this year. They just, they did such a good job, and I love Oralie Berry, she's awesome. A lot of people did comment about your speech, though, so, Mr. Dreszek, they were, yeah, they, no, he said he had good news and bad news. The bad news was he wasn't singing. But all in all, it was a wonderful night, and I got a comment from somebody who I saw this weekend on the 4th of July, at the 4th of July this weekend, and they're on a Board of Education in a different town, and they said what impressed us, them the most about our graduation, it was student run. It wasn't about the adults, it was about the students graduating, and they definitely thought that was a good job that we did. The football team is at a G Bears camp this, tonight, last night and tomorrow night. Western New England comes out, and they run a camp for football players, and we have a bunch of schools, Long Meadow, South Windsor, so they're, they're at Enfield High School. Summer workouts at the high school started, so even if you don't play a fall sport, you play a winter sport or just a spring sport, you can do summer workouts, you can contact me, I can direct you to the coach if you don't know. Incoming freshmen, you're more than welcome to join. I also attended the 8th grade breakfast, which was well-attended, the kids got their yearbooks and lots of yummy desserts, and that was my last 8th grade breakfast. It's kind of sad. With all that being said, I talked to a lot of people this weekend at the town green, and first, I'm going to say, congratulations to you both. This is your one year, you know, your officially here year, but one of the things that this person said to me is that they felt, they were at the graduation, and they just feel that there's a different energy about the school district, and then with Chief Fox coming in, they just feel like there's a different energy in the town. And it's a good energy, and it's a positive energy. And they were very complimentary of the board, and I think that when you have the right leadership, you can have a really strong board. And so, you know, like we always say, there's no Democrats or Republicans, it's just people trying to work hard up here. But it's nice that people, people recognize it and people see it, and I felt the energy too. I thought Enfield High was, was really fun, the graduation. I felt, I go to the town green every year, there was, there was a different energy this year. So with that being said, I hope everybody has a wonderful and safe summer.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. And Ms. Hernandez?
So I also want to give congratulations to the grads, and I will keep my remarks brief, very simply, as a reminder, play is the primary occupation of children, so I hope that everybody gets out and plays and gets outside, and just enjoys himself, have a wonderful summer, and we cannot, I'm already in countdown, actually, my daughter's already in countdown mode, she's done with me, so she's ready to go back, but have a great summer.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Neville?
Two items. Couple of weeks ago, a good friend of mine and a good colleague, Mary Ellen Finity, passed away. She worked for our district as a sub, as a teacher of English, foreign language speakers, ESL, for years and years and years. Most of the time I was at the middle school, she was there. She was a wonderful, kind, and proud Irish lady, okay? And she was, she always, she always brought me an Irish soda bed for St. Patrick's Day, so took good care of the principal. But she was just a wonderful lady, very, very thoughtful, and very, very kind. She taught in the day when we didn't have really an ESL program. Any youngster who came into school that had spoken another language than English, she got them. And before you knew it, working hard with those youngsters, those kids picked up the language, she buddied them up with other kids, got them into classes, and they did very, very well. She was just very, very kind. I think most people didn't know the type of work she did, just those of us in administration certainly did. But I used to meet her in church and the supermarket, but she became suddenly ill and passed away, so, but as you know, when we lose some of our veteran talent, I tend to bring it up here, because I don't think we can, we have to keep in mind that we didn't get where we are by ourselves. We got here because of those who came before us. And Mary Ellen was one of the, one of the good people, so God bless you, Mary Ellen, and we miss you. I have one other item, and it's really in response to something that came up in audience, audiences at the June 12th meeting, I believe. It was brought up by Shannon Grant, and she had stated that the board's responsibility as board members is for the management of the schools and the building. I think this came up as part of the Barnard thing. The town is maintaining the buildings, by statute, you are responsible for the building, you are personally responsible if the budget exceeds the amount allocated, and you are responsible for the building but are not in control of the building. School buildings are different than town buildings. And I'm reading this right from the minutes of that meeting. Shortly after that meeting, I think I talked to Walter, and I also asked Chris if he could get us some clarification on that from the state, because I thought I had an understanding of it, but I, I wanted to make sure that in response to it, that we could do it in a legal way. And the funny thing is, after I talked to Chris a couple of days later, coincidentally, he received a letter from an attorney for the State Department of Ed, which effectively answered Sharon's question, and shared, he shared that letter with the entire Board of Education. What I'd like to do is read this attorney's response into the record, so all will have a clear understanding that we as a Board of Ed are in compliance with state statute. And with that said, I'd like to read that letter into the record. It's from the State Department of, State of Connecticut, State Department of Education, to address Demarci Tolicio. Dear Mrs. Tolicio, I am writing in response to your email received on Monday, June 11th, 2018, to the State Board of Education and Peter Habbelent, Legal Director of the State Department of Education. In this email, you attached an amendment to your complaint dated April 10th, 2018, pursuant to Section 10-4B of the General Statutes, that Town of Enfield and Enfield Public Schools are not properly maintaining school facilities in accordance with the requirements of the General Statutes. As I noted in my previous correspondence, your complaint does not provide evidence of an ongoing and systematic violation of the Connecticut General Statutes. In addition, you did not provide sufficient documentary evidence to support your claim. You provided your April 10th complaint with a short addendum and an OSHA report indicating that the school district was required to clean the ventilation system at Barnard School. Nevertheless, I contacted the superintendent, and it appears that the district is working to address the identified problems at Barnard School, in conjunction with the local health department and OSHA. In addition, you indicate that it is a clear violation of the General Statutes that the Town of Enfield maintains control over the maintenance of the school buildings. Please note that pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 10-241, the school district consists of the municipality and a local Board of Education. Because the town and the board jointly comprise the school district and are duly responsible for the maintenance of the public schools, it is not a clear violation of the General Statutes that the Town of Enfield maintains the school buildings. Finally, you allege that the students from Nathan Hale School, which was closed last year, was, were crammed into Hazerville Middle School. The enrollment in Hazerville Middle was 373 students. Based upon the enrollment figures for the past five years, 373 students is not a significant deviation from previous years. You provided no evidence to support your allegation of overcrowding, including but not limited to documentation, to show the actual maximum capacity of the building. Your complaint does not conform to the requirements of Section 10-4B, because you have not provided any evidence other than your own statements to support your claims, including evidence that the school district has refused to address the matter. As I noted in the April 10th letter, it appears that the Enfield School District is taking reasonable steps to address the matter with the appropriate agencies. Sincerely, Laura Anastasio, Staff Attorney, Division of Legal and Government Affairs, and is copied to Chris Dreszek, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville, and just a correction, it was Hazerville Memorial, not Hazerville Middle.
I'm just reading what was.
All right, well, yeah, just a, just a correction for the record, it's Hazerville Memorial School. Mr. Ryder?
I also wanted to echo the congratulations to the class of 2018. I also had a chance to attend the graduation ceremony. That was my first as a board member, I thought that was fantastic. Over 370 students graduated from Enfield High, and I wish them all the best, and to, I believe, Chris's point, those leaving us to military service, our thanks and gratitude isn't enough, but we wish you safe and happy returns to Enfield or wherever your next steps are after that. As Mr. Dreszek mentioned, our next meeting is not until August 20, I'm sorry, our next meeting is August 28th, but prior to that, if you are entering kindergarten, there are kindergarten orientations taking place on Monday, August 27th, which will be ahead of that 28th meeting, so I wanted to mention the dates now. Hazerville Memorial School, Henry Barnard, and Enfield Street School, for any incoming kindergarten students and their families, they are all welcome. I know Hazerville is at 9:00 a.m., Henry Barnard and Enfield Street are at 10:00 or 11:00 a.m. I don't have the exact times for those two schools, but they, they stagger them, so that way the buses can come to the schools, and any student gets a chance to ride the bus around the neighborhood nearest the school district. Most schools, the students receive a free book, and it's a good chance for the principals to get a chance to speak to the parents. You'll get to see your students' classroom. If you are on vacation still, and you miss that opportunity, but you want to get a chance to take your students in to see the building, just reach out to the buildings themselves, and maybe you could introduce yourself to the principals, who are in the schools most of the summer, and you could say hello then, if you, if you're going to miss orientation on the 27th at those three schools. Also at Eli Whitney, their grade three orientation, for any Hazerville students moving from grade two to grade three, that's also on Monday, August 27th, that's at 5:30 p.m. So if you're on Eli Whitney or Hazerville's Facebook pages, or you reach out to either school, you can confirm times on that. Flyers for that went home with the second-grade students the last week of school, I believe, on Monday. And then after school starts, of course, they'll have their welcome-back picnics at Eli Whitney on September 21st, Hazerville on September 13th. The first PTO meetings at both schools are Eli Whitney, Thursday, September 6th at 6:30, Hazerville on Wednesday, September 12th at 6:00 p.m., both take place in the schools' libraries. And beyond that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe summer. We are now two weeks into the summer, as we, our last day of school was Tuesday, June 26th, and we still have, I believe, seven weeks left to enjoy our time off, so thank you very much.
All right, could you repeat all those dates again for?
They'll all be on the websites for the individual schools, as well as the PTO's pages.
Thank you.
And the email address should be on the screen as well.
Yeah. Any questions, please email Mr. Ryder, he will send you a copy. So I want to echo, again, I'm the last one, and I, most of my comments were already spilled out, but congratulations to our duo here, Mr. Dreszek and Mr. Longi, for a wonderful first year of steering the ship in the right direction, keeping it afloat, and even above afloat with the $100,000 we gave back to the town, which, if you were at the council meeting on the 2nd, there was already $40,000 appropriated to the public works and building the grounds to, to work on our, on our, on our schools, to clean them for the summer, so, to get extra staff. So we thank you for the council for that, and all the hard work we did to get that $100,000 back to the town. I'm going to echo the mayor also on what he said on the 2nd, that at graduation, there was a ambiance or whatever, that there was, that things are different in this town, that we're going in the right direction. And even walking around at the 4th of July celebration this weekend, it was just my same feeling that, that we're, things, we're in a good, we're in a good state. And I was planning a year-end review of our school here, but we, you know, we lived through all the snow days, we lived through the lockdown at the high school, we lived through the shooting in Florida, we had, you know, the, between the mayor and the council, we had the meeting with the police chief on security. We addressed, we did a lot of things this year, so kudos to our staff and our, and our administration, and the town's administration for that, so I think I'm just going to leave it at that. So, anything else? So let's go to unfinished business? We have none. New business? We have none. Board committee comments? Curriculum?
Nothing.
Nothing. Finance?
We met yesterday. We went through the budget, and how much money, the final number for how much money we're going to be giving back will be, will have at the next meeting on August 20th, but now we might be thinking that the number might possibly be around $102,000.
Okay. Policy, we have none. Leadership, we have none. Joint facilities, we're, we're meeting, and we took, we took a siesta last Thursday, so...
We're meeting this Thursday?
Oh, that's right, we did, no, we didn't meet last Thursday. Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Two weeks ago.
I'm really on.
Yeah. We'll be back together this Thursday, and just working at it. High school building committee, we're also meeting this Thursday before the joint facilities, which that's winding down. No other committees to report about, so, number 13, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes, June 12th, 2018, moved by Mr. Rutledge.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion? All in favor? Six in favor, zero against? Number 14, Ms. Riley?
All right. The finance committee met on July 9th, 2018, to review financial statements for the month of May, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded, there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of May, total expenditures amount to $6,136,461.32, broken down between payroll totaling $4,083,723.24, and other accounts totaling $2,052,738.8. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? All in favor? Six in favor, zero against? Ms. Riley?
All right, I'll go one more. Finance committee met on July 9th, 2018, to review financial statements for the month of June, year-to-date, to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded, there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of June, total expenditures amount to $8,421,473.45, broken down between payroll totaling $2,842,630.15, and other accounts totaling $5,578,843.30. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? All in favor? Six in favor, zero against?
And we do not have any line item transfers.
Okay. Number 15, correspondent and communications?
Uh, there's nothing.
I just want to add one thing that happened, matter of fact, Sunday after the fireworks, we were sitting at the corner of Alden Ave, trying to get on Route 5. Policemen stopped us because there was people crossing the street. After the people crossed the street, he was still holding me there. And it's okay, I mean, he was holding me, but he came up to my window and explained to me why he was holding me there. He came up and said, listen, I would let you go, but there's nowhere for you to go, so might as well just wait here for, if... so might as well just wait here for, if more people come. So that was very nice. I didn't get the policeman's name, but I just wanted to put that on the record, that was, he came to me and explained to me, he says, I'm not purposely holding you here, there's just nowhere for you to go, and you might as well just sit here. I said, I sit up there. So I, I said, thank you, and I thanked him for the explanation. So sorry, I wanted to add that one more thing. Any, any executive session?
No, sir.
No executive session? So do I have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. LeBlanc, seconded by Mr. Neville. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. We'll see you on August 28th. Have a nice summer.